Good morning, everyone. Good morning to the citizens of Portsmouth. Happy New Year. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to novel coronavirus, Executive Order 51 on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the fourth day of January 2021 without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each city council member is participating from their home or remote location, and I am in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes? Okay. Mr. Battle?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
We have a need to go into closed session. And Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, I need to call for a motion.
Well, after I read the motion. Yes, sir. There is a move to go into closed electronic meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsections and City Council Code 2020-102 for the purpose of discussing, considering, and/or interviewing prospective candidates for appointment to city council, city council positions, boards and commissions, and/or liaison positions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been approved and duly seconded. We are in closed session.
I need to call Ralph.
Oh, right, right, right.
Okay. Mr. Barnes?
Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Before the vote, there has to be a question. Call for question discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we are going to read it, and then we're going to open it up for questions.
I didn't hear, I didn't understand.
There will be, um, once the motion is read, there will be a question period for us to have a discussion once we go into closed session.
No, no, I mean a question on the motion.
Okay, what's the question on the motion, sir?
Um, I thank for my colleagues, first of all, Happy New Year to everyone. For my colleagues, I think that it would not be in order for us to go into closed session to discuss the appointment of the council member for vacancy as well as board and commissions because based on the section of the Freedom of Information Act, I'm not clear as to what item is going to exempt us from being in open session. And maybe if legal counsel could advise on that because we are just discussing placing persons into public positions. And I don't know of any more openness that we should have in discussing who will take a vacancy as well as who serves on boards and commissions. That should be an open process. And so I would like to hear from legal counsel as to what item under 3711A that was cited that puts this into exempted status.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Counsel, um, City Attorney?
Dr. Whitaker.
Stromberg?
Yes. I don't have the code right in front of me. We've used this, and a staff attorney, attorney of my staff writes this out. But I'm almost positive that these statutes, and I'd have to run down and get my code book, but I'm pretty positive that these statutes overrule the Freedom of Information law. I think, though, that the election itself has to be open and in public. And of course, we'll be voting in public. But I think discussion can be held and has to be held in closed session. And I believe these two statutes cover it. I can excuse myself for just a couple of minutes, run and get my code and check it. This has never really come up in the months I've served as interim. And I have full confidence that my staff, Jeff Miller, the attorney who drafts these, is aware of the Freedom of Information Act and has studied these statutes appropriately. But if you give me just a second, I'll be right back. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think I needed the code sections. Be right back. I don't know if we want to take a quick adjournment or continue on.
Well, let me just, let me just ask counsel, why would we need to go into closed session to discuss something that is a very public matter? And that is appointing someone to city council. Each of us ran openly. We attended forums. And I don't see the necessity of discussing the vacancy in closed session. I think it would be more transparent for our citizens. You know, the essence of the Freedom of Information Act really is for things to be open. That's what we want, open government. And so I would hope that our fellow council members would see that this would be a discussion worth having for our citizens to hear. There's no private information that's being discussed. There are no contracts. Each of us went through this process openly.
We will wait till the city attorney comes back with the information, and then we will proceed accordingly. Counsel, Councilmember Battle, you have your hand up, sir?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any need for us to have to go into closed session either. I mean, there's nothing in that closed session that I won't do out here. And we don't have to debate it and look the laws up and so forth. Whatever we're doing, I'm not ashamed of nothing, knowing how I feel and who I choose and so forth. That's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Councilman Battle.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Stromberg, are you prepared?
Yes.
Would you proceed, please?
Yes, council members. Let me just catch my breath here, I ran down to my office. Closed Meetings Authorized for Certain Limited Purposes. Public bodies may hold closed meetings only for the following purposes: Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, and resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. So that would, uh, that would cover us.
Well, Attorney Stromberg?
Yes.
I, um, that section, 3711, as you know, it lists three specific person there. It's the three areas there that are listed, the public official, appointees, or employees. And the vice, the vacant position doesn't fall within any of those three categories. The person that we appointed to council is not a public officer, is not an appointee because the person hasn't been appointed yet, and it's definitely is not an employee. And so there are three specific persons that are mentioned there, and I don't see where the vacant seat fits within any of those three.
And Councilman, I respectfully disagree. I think appointment would qualify for that. At any rate, if the council, it doesn't have to go into closed session. If the body wants to open it up, they're entitled to. They're somewhat limited in what they can discuss. But it's, the word is "may", so it's really up to city council. And whatever city council wants to do, if they want to open it up, they can. They don't have to go into closed sessions. But again, personnel matters, salaries, things of that nature, certainly, we need to be careful about that. But it's really, it's city council's choice. And I understand, Councilman Whitaker, you're saying by your interpretation, it doesn't matter, it should be in open session. And like I said, council can agree to that if they like, or not agree to go into closed session.
Well, like I said, it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit into any of the three categories that you mentioned.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, and thank you, Attorney Stromberg. Councilmember Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the key word is "may", so I think we have a motion on the floor, is that correct?
Correct.
And I would like to make a substitute motion that we conduct the interviews in open session.
Second.
Councilmembers, it's not necessary to have a substitute motion. You can just rescind your motions.
I guess since I made the motion for approval, I will rescind the motion.
Councilman Moody, will you rescind your second?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Moody.
I was going to say that we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
No, sir. No, the motions have been rescinded. You're in public session.
Okay.
Right. And that kind of pre-causes us to go forward with the process. We will have the interview process based on the motion being rescinded. We will conduct the interview process of the appointee candidates in person.
Could I make a motion?
You have the floor, Councilmember Barnes.
I want to make a motion that we vote Christopher Wood for the open seat for city council.
Excuse me, could you repeat that, please? Could you repeat that, please?
I said I want to make a motion that we vote on, vote for Christopher Wood for the city council's open seat.
Okay, we haven't reached that point in the process. What I will do at this time is I will explain to everyone what the process was in determining the candidates for appointment. It was determined that we would open the appointment process through an application, and there were over 30 applicants who submitted applications for the appointment. In addition to those 30 applicants, it was also decided that we would choose the top three candidates in order to consider them for the appointment. And each of you have received a list of those top three candidates, is that correct?
Correct.
This is why I'm making my motion since y'all already have other candidates. Might as well just go ahead and get it out of the way.
No, we wouldn't get that out the way because that's getting ahead of the process. We need to, as a part of our process, we've identified the top three candidates. Now it is time for us to then conduct the open interview process and then subsequently have the discussion.
Mr.?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Dr. Whitaker?
There's a motion on the floor. Are you denying the motion?
Second.
Because there's a, I think your councilperson made a motion, and you have to recognize it or move forward. What are we doing? Did you recognize him?
I did, I did recognize him.
And he made a motion?
He did make a motion, but the motion wasn't duly seconded. And the motion therefore, sir, excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Can I finish talking?
I like the second emotion, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to add a motion also that we appoint Tamara Schumake to the position of the vacant position of city council.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can I speak?
Yes, Attorney Stromberg.
We're in a work session right now. There's no voting yet. It's not even allowed in a work session. Vote has to be in public at 12 noon. Today is supposed to be, the work session, we're supposed to discuss, you know, the candidates and what's on the agenda. But there should be no voting going on until we're open up to the public, and that's not until 12 noon. Even though this session has become open, the vote was noticed for 12 noon today. And it'd be inappropriate to take any motions voting at this time. I'm sorry to interrupt. I really try to stay low-key, but I think this is very important.
Thank you.
This is, this, thank you, Attorney Stromberg. This is very important. And once again, I will reaffirm with council that we had a process that was in place. Everyone participated in the process. We have three candidates that we have chosen for consideration for the appointment. We are now at the part of our program of this meeting where we will interview those three candidates.
Okay.
The first candidate that we will be interviewing will be Ms. Tamara Schumake.
Ms. Schumake, if you would please cut your camera on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Schumake. I hope that you and your family enjoyed a happy new year.
Absolutely, and I hope the same for you all.
Very good. We're excited about you participating in the application process. And I'm not going to speak for my colleagues on council, but I will say that now is the time in which you can share with us why you wish to serve on the Portsmouth City Council.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor Shannon Glover. Good morning again to all of the council members present today and also to the city of Portsmouth that is currently watching. So my whole reasoning behind wanting to serve as a council member and the reason behind me actually running previously for the council seat is because I have a love for my city. I understand the metrics of my city. I understand the needs of my city. And I want to be a part of making my city a better place to live, work, and be a productive member. I think that the new council has a different perspective. As of right now, I see that there is a lot of opinions, very strong opinions. And I hope it's because of the love for the city. And I hope that we can all come together eventually, even if I'm not appointed, which is fine with me. It's all up to everyone that's sitting on this particular council as of right now. I will return back to school board. And so it is my hope and my prayer that we can all work together for the betterment of this city.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions that you have for Ms. Schumake? Please raise your hand to be recognized. Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, Ms. Tamara Schumake. The question that I'm going to ask of all of the candidates today is that this appointment is a one-year appointment from January to December. And in that, the person who currently holds the seat would have to run for the seat for the election that will be held November 2nd. Council has already set that. And my question is, are you interested in running for the seat that will become open again on December 31st?
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. I would say absolutely. I want to finish what I started. My whole goal was to become a councilperson in the city of Portsmouth. So this one-year appointment, I would be extremely appreciative. But I will also run for the special election as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other of my colleagues who would like to ask Ms. Schumake any questions? Mr. Battle? Councilman Battle? You're on mute, sir?
Yes. Ms. Schumake?
Yes, sir.
As a councilperson, you have to make a lot of hard choices. There is a power structure in all cities that has a lot of influence over the governing process. As a good councilperson, you will have to be able to tell the power structure no and possibly your peers no to do what your intentions are, which is to represent the total populace. It takes courage, it takes fortitude, it takes faith and guts. And a lot of times, we can ask for things, and we are not understanding what we are asking for. It's not a cakewalk being a councilperson. And do you feel that you have the qualities to do it all, represent the people, and take the backlash and the misinformation about what you're doing here? You really have to be a special kind of person. Do you feel that you have that in you?
Thank you for that, Councilman Paul Battle. I would say, from my past experience being appointed and elected to the school board, just to be perfectly frank with you, I don't owe anyone anything. Nobody has paid me, nobody has told me, nobody has forced me to do anything. If I do decide to do something, it's on my own accord. And if I do vote in a certain manner, it's because that's what's right for the citizens. I've done it before, and I'll continue to do it in the future. Having had a problem with doing what's right, and I will continuously not have a problem to do what's right for the citizens of Portsmouth. My character has never been questioned. And if it has been questioned, it's because of those who may have done something to me, and I didn't do what they wanted me to do, if that's any concern of anyone. So to answer your question, no, I don't have a problem doing what's right. Just because I do not publicize everything that may happen to me behind closed doors doesn't mean that I don't get the riffraff and all of the issues and anything else that may come about dealing with politics. I deal with it with poise, and I deal with it with professionalism.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on for a second, Vice Mayor. Before I give you the floor, I would ask, is are there any of our other colleagues who wish to ask Ms. Schumake any questions? Seeing none? Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to urge my colleagues to recognize that Mrs. Tamara Schumake has run a successful race with professionalism, without any hatred. She has served our community well on the school board. She was out there with many of us for the 45 days of early voting and throughout the election cycle. And just shy of less than 260 votes or so, I didn't count anybody but mine that close because I know where I fell in the lineup. The citizens of Portsmouth have clearly stated that this would have been the next councilperson that they would have liked to have seen sit on the council. So I think it's only fair. Her credentials shine bright, bright above many of the other candidates. That's why she was my top pick for this position. So I would urge you to join me in selecting Tamara Schumake to serve the vacant position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lucas Burke. And Ms. Schumake, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I took the pleasure of reading your application, and you have had quite a bit of involvement in the community since, I believe, age 15.
Absolutely.
Share with me which strengths you bring, you would bring to council in order to help us move in a positive direction to meet the needs of our citizens.
Well, I'll say this. Excuse me, I am level-headed. I take everyone's perspective into account. I understand different perspectives from each individual, and I'm able to make a conscious decision. I'm able to get along with anyone. If I do have a disagreement with someone, I'm pretty sure I will publicize it unless it's publicized to me. I'm one of those people to be able to work with anyone because that's what the city needs. We have done away with the times of us being in disagreement publicly about any and everything. This is the time that we need to bond together to work towards what we all have publicly stated, whether when we ran or not, that we want to see for the city. And that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to work with each council member, whether I agree with you or not, to make sure that the city of Portsmouth leads where it needs to be.
Thank you so much, Ms. Schumake. And thank you for your time. And thank you for putting in your application for consideration.
I appreciate you all, thank you so much.
That concludes the interview. Our next interview applicant will be Ms. Maisha Clemmons. If you all would bear with us for a minute, we are contacting...
Ms. Clemmons, if you would cut on your camera, please.
Hello, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Ms. Clemmons. And thank you for making yourself available to present to us this morning. We're excited to hear from you. Thank you for putting in your, thank you for submitting your application. And this is the time in which you will have an opportunity to explain to all of the members of city council why you would be a good choice. of City Council uh why you would be a good choice as an appointed member of City Council.
Well, first of all, thank you so very much for this opportunity. Um, the opportunity to just be selected um at this point is an honor and it's a privilege to sit in front of all of you all because you have all been dedicated to this community in different ways. Um, you're always active. I've seen each one of you in different events in different capacities, so your service is um noted and appreciated. So just thank you just for all that y'all have done and all that I've personally seen. Um, again, Happy New Year to you, and my name is Maisha Clemmons. I have been living in Portsmouth about eight years. I am thankful for this opportunity, um and I initially applied really because I know that I have a lot of service, I have a lot of some energy, I have a lot of dedication and commitment to the citizens of Portsmouth and just people in general. Um, my heart is to be a servant leader. I am a servant leader in different capacities, um especially in the city of Portsmouth, uh whether it's working with the PTA. I'm very active um in the schools, um working with the uh Portsmouth Volunteers for the homeless, working with the homeless community. Also, I have also participated in the um Citizens Police Academy, um that was in twenty-eighteen, so just to see another angle, another side of, you know, what entails, what entails the entire community as a whole and how can we um better serve it and just appreciate what everyone does in the city. What, um, I serve on the library board. I am on the Board of Directors at Effingham Street Family YMCA. Um, so again, for me, this whole, this opportunity is very important for me because it's all about families, all about service and community. And Portsmouth has been very gracious and has humbled me and given me many opportunities that I have not had in my entire life. So without, you know, the members of council with this opportunity, without me moving to Portsmouth, being a first-time homebuyer, um in a beautiful home, um I'm very appreciative of the city and I think Portsmouth is very spectacular and unique in its own right. Um, I think Portsmouth is, you know, it's the heart of Hampton Roads. Um, it's literally to me in the center of Hampton Roads, twenty, twenty-five minutes to this um each city's interior, which is pretty unique to me, you know? Um, again, Norfolk is about nine minutes away or so, but into the main interior of each city, we're in a unique position and I think a lot of people don't appreciate that fact. So once people realize, you know, Portsmouth really is the heart, you know? We may have challenges, but we have a strong beat and we can keep pushing forward. As long as the direction is forward, this city will be dynamic. It is dynamic and it's really quaint. And um I, that's the part that I appreciate. And um my goal is to try to entice more homeowners, more businesses to come into the city because it's very beautiful. Um, there are, there's so many opportunities on High Street where new businesses can come in. They can come in and start their whole, their business. They can, you know, expand. There is grand opportunities here and it's just sitting there waiting to be picked up. And so, you know, the goal maybe would be to, you know, do like a High Street Initiative or something like that, you know? How can we have targeted marketing um and things of that nature in order to get people to wanna come here? What type of small business incentives could we provide to these people? You know, to existing business owners and businesses in Portsmouth, you know, what type of incentives can we offer to those people because they have been established? If they serve and do something in addition to the community, to maybe like hire, you know, teens, um, you know, maybe, you know, develop workforce skills. I'm kinda like a workforce person too. That's kinda one of my backgrounds too. But um just to give others opportunities and to, you know, give appreciation to these business owners for their business and their service to the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clemmons. And a- at this, at this time, I I will ask my colleagues on council uh to uh ask any questions that they may have of you.
Okay.
Are there any questions um from my colleagues? Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, you have the floor. You're muted. You're muted, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Maisha Clemmons, it's a pleasure uh to to meet you. Um, I reviewed um your application uh with a great intent. And um one of the questions that um I plan to ask um all of the candidates who will be interviewed today is um you do realize that this is a one-year appointment that will end December thirty-first, and my question for you and and probably the the citizens who are watching today um is do you have an interest in running in the special election that will be held on November second and then the general election that will be held in November two thousand twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Um, I understand the term of this appointment and I will, um, I do plan on running as well, so thank you.
Are there any questions, uh other questions from my colleagues on council? Dr. Whitaker, did I see your hand, sir?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Well, Ms. Clemmons, I I will say um that in viewing your application, uh you have done a great deal in the short time that you've been here in the city of Portsmouth a- and we are grateful to have citizens like you who are ready to step up and and be that public servant, um servant leader to help our city to improve. And I would just say that thank you for taking time out to submit your application and to share your thoughts with us. I do have a question for you, though.
Sure.
That I've asked asked other other applicants. Uh, what skills do you bring to or would you bring to the group in order to make us a stronger unit and meet the needs of the citizens of the city of Portsmouth?
Thank you for your question. Um, my background is in public relations um and communication. So for me, it's all about um community outreach. It's about how to connect with various um groups of people. And programming is also another one of my passions and strengths as well because you can communicate, you know, with the public in certain ways, but without, you know, action behind that communication, it's it's null and vo- void almost. So I wanna take opportunities to develop, you know, um programs and give you, give you all ideas in um just different capacities on how can we do something different? You know, what we're doing is okay and it's good, and now how can we enhance it even more? So mine is community relations, communications and development. Um, those are my strong suits. And just as a whole, um, I believe in being a good, active listener as well. I can't really develop anything or do anything without being able to listen to everyone's opinion. You know, sometimes, you know, the 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 struggle is, you know, why, no one's listening to me, no one's hearing and this, that and the other. But I think because everybody wants to be heard, if everyone took a chance just to listen to each other, even through the differences, there's a beauty in it, you know? There's always something that we can take and put together, and so my strength is being a good, active listener as well to the community, to um council members, to you, Mayor Glover, definitely for sure. And um that's, I have so many other strengths, but I do not wanna take all your time. I know you have other people. But I am committed. I'm I'm strong. I am um aware of what's going on and um I I'm not easily moved by anything but positivity and moving forward and helping people. That's just my passion. That's been my my life, so.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Clemmons, and thank you again for putting in your application for consideration. We appreciate that very much. And this uh concludes the interview, and you have a nice day, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. You too. Thank you all, and Happy New Year again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Happy New Year.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We will now have our interview with Mr. Christopher Woodard.
Mr. Woodard, if you would please unmute and unmute and cut your camera on. Councilmembers who are transitioning, just give us a second. Mr. Woodard, if you would please unmute and cut on your camera.
Mayor, do we need to take a short break until uh they get the technical problems worked out?
Well, well, I'm I'm asking the question now. Um, so if you could just hold a minute, I will get that answer. Colleagues, why don't we take a short recess until we can get uh this technical dis- difficulty resolved so that we can get Mr. Woodard on on the screen? So we'll take a three-minute, three-minute break and we'll reconvene in three minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you um, on our screen it says guests are waiting to join. Is that something that um we need to tap or is that something Ms. White controls?
That 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 is not something that that we need to uh to engage at this time.
Okay, so that's not gonna interfere if I move it from my screen.
No, it will not.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Woodard should be coming online very shortly.
Mr. Jones is still trying to bring Mr. Woodard up. They're working on that as we speak. If council would like to move on to other discussions and then we'll deal with Mr. Woodard while he's available, that's your option.
I just wanted to take a moment to ask everyone's opinion on, we're still waiting to get Mr. Woodard online. However, there are other items that we can still discuss. If it is the pleasure of council that we move the discussion forward and get back when Mr. Woodard comes online, I would like to hear a response to that request. Are we all in favor of that? Can raise your hand? Okay, with that being said, I wanted to ask the question in terms of the vice mayor appointment. Are there any candidates or are there any of my colleagues who wish to be considered for the vice mayor appointment? Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to be considered to serve in the vice mayor position for the term of one year through the special election term. I have already served in that capacity before. I think it would add a balance to the council for me to serve in that role to back you up in the event that there are events that you cannot attend. I would be willing and ready and able to step in and fill that role. I would like to receive the nomination and it would be my pleasure to serve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. And I want to just remind everyone that the appropriate time that we will vote on this particular position will be at noon. But I just wanted to see, because we wanted to make sure the process was open and public, if there were any candidates who wanted the consideration. Dr. Whitaker.
I didn't realize that the persons would be given their speeches at this time. I think it would be better to wait for the fourth person to be appointed so that they can hear the candidates as well.
There are no objections to that. I'm fine with that part of the process.
So hopefully Ms. Lucas Burke will give her speech again so that the appointed person can hear that as well.
Thank you. No problem.
If that is the pleasure of everyone, then we'll proceed accordingly.
Yeah, and I would be considered well and I would go to appropriate time.
Thank you for your comment, Councilmember Barnes.
Mr. Woodard, if you're online, if you could please unmute your phone and cut on your camera.
Just popped out again.
Okay, he's trying to get back in. Daniel, let him in. Mr. Woodard, if you're there.
I'm here now.
Okay, can you cut on your camera for us?
Okay.
We can see him.
Okay.
All right, how you doing today?
I can't see him.
I can see him.
Okay, now I can.
Mr. Woodard.
Hey, how you doing, man?
Happy New Year, sir. Thank you so much. This is Mayor Shannon Glover and thank you so much for putting in your application for consideration to be a member on the Portsmouth City Council. And I just wanted to take a moment to let you know that, as you can see, my colleagues are here with me to listen to you and to hear why you want to be a member of the Portsmouth City Council. And after you get through with your comments, I will certainly ask that my colleagues present their questions to you for you to answer. Is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor.
Well.
Ready? Once again, my name is Christopher Woodard Jr. And I would like to thank you guys for accepting my application and also taking the time to hear me through this process. Once again, this has been a five-year plan for me to be a public servant. So this is just not something sporadic that I thought about this year. This is something I've been working on. I've been working with the people in the community. And I also believe, you know, I just have a lot to bring to the tape. So, you know, I see our community and the rest. So, you know, I think I've been going through the right channels just to figure out the ins and outs of Portsmouth. I worked in the school system as a substitute teacher in Norfolk and Portsmouth for four years. So I wanted to get a good idea of what we may need or we may be lacking or just what we can improve within the city. So I bring experience to the table just knowing the insight of what's going on in our school system and also others as well. I worked in this community for 15 years as a contracted specialist at Lowe's and I also was administrative manager. I had 60 people underneath me. I ran my program very well. And I think being a council member, leadership is something that you should have. And it's not something that just should be on a resume, but you should, you know, do the work. I've done the work. Also, I'm a college graduate of Norfolk State University, a mass communications graduate. And like many of your candidates that was running this year, they feel like tourism is something that we should look into more in Portsmouth. I mean, right now, we are, you know, we have like a bad image with that. And my specialty is tourism, public relations, contracting. And like I say, I have some insight in the school system. I think I'd be a very good fit with these key skills to help out the city council. Because I think right now we're not looking to just add someone to the seat. We're looking to improve. And I'm that candidate that can improve the council as well. Is the audio off?
You can mute it, Mayor.
Mr. Woodard, thank you so much. And thank you for clearing me up on the muted.
Okay, okay.
It's always a pleasure to see folks who are in our schools and doing work with our children. So thank you for your service. To my colleagues, you've heard from Mr. Woodard. Are there any questions that you have for Mr. Woodard at this time? Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Woodard, I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked the other two applicants who are being considered for this vacant position. Of course, you realize that this is a one-year term that ends December 31st and you will have to submit paperwork to run in the special election that will be held on November 2nd of this year. So my question to you is, are you interested in running in the special election and also the general election that will be held in November 2022?
Okay, well, just to give you some insight, Ms. Lisa Burke, I was actually running in this election, this previous election that just passed. You know, I had some things I fell short with. But for the most part, I am here to serve this one term if I'm appointed. And I will also be ready for November 2nd as well.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Are there any other questions from our colleagues? Seeing none, Mr. Woodard, I do have a question for you. Understanding, after looking at your application, your background of teaching and being involved with young people, what additional strengths can you bring to this city council to help us to improve our city as an organization?
Just as a whole, well, like I said before, and I don't think it's just something that you could just throw out there, but just tourism alone. Make Portsmouth a vacation destination, something that families can come to and really enjoy the city. I know we have some projects coming with the casino. And, you know, that's just one thing, but we must make other destinations, other city highlights to make Portsmouth a likable city. Just to make people say, hey, you know what? When I come to the beach, I'm going to also visit Portsmouth. And I think that I've done the work. I will continue to do the work if I'm placed on the city council. And I have the skill set. I'm just not a resume warrior, but I've actually done the work. And I think that's what we're looking for and the citizens of Portsmouth are looking for. Someone who can do it.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Woodard, for your consideration and for sharing your thoughts. It takes a lot for citizens to step up and serve their community. And we appreciate, we're appreciative of your efforts. If there are no other questions, then this interview will conclude. And have a nice day, sir.
Thank you.
Now that we've got the three interviews out of the way, I would like to just take, for us to take a moment and hear from our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White, on some procedural matters, if we could. Ms. White?
Yes, sir. Members of the city council, just for your information, you are in public session. You are welcome to have a discussion about the candidates if you wish. One thing that you need to be aware of is that 12 noon, the very first item you have is the appointment of the candidate to city council. That person will need to be sworn in. If you're looking for them to vote on the rest of the agenda, they will need to be sworn in prior to voting on those items. And we would need to contact them to get them online and available to do so. It would be appropriate to get a consensus of the city council on who your top candidate will be, hopefully, that we can prepare to have that person available here to be sworn in and provided the appropriate equipment to be able to vote on the rest of the items. It will require you to take a brief break after you do the appointment in order for us to get them sworn in and to get them online. And I just wanted to put that out there too. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Madam Clerk. Right now I see the hand of Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I don't know who we need to pose this question to, if it's city clerk or if it's our legal counsel. But what happens in the event, so the public know and we can all know, that there's a tie? Three and three.
In the event there's a tie on any candidate, that is a deny vote and you would have to pick a, make a, have a new motion. And it would continue until someone receives at least four votes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. Councilmember Paul Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Madam Clerk, are you saying to us that we would possibly need to vote before 12 o'clock?
What I'm saying, sir, is if you all can at least come to a consensus, that is not an official vote until we call the roll at 12. But at least a consensus would allow for us to make contact with whoever your choice is. But you don't have to. It's strictly up to council.
Well, it would make sense that we would do that to afford the time, use the time to practice.
Yes, sir.
Are we all clear on the matter? Well, with that being said, I would like to open up the floor for consensus. Out of the three applicants that we've just heard, anyone who would like to start off that consensus, please raise your hand and you will be recognized.
Does it consent saying who they're voting for?
Yes, out of the three applicants.
I will start off. I'm voting for Woodard.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Paul Battle.
I'm voting for Woodard.
Councilman Bill Moody.
Voting for Woodard.
Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. Two strong women presented in this interview. And I made my opening statement on why I thought that Tamara Schumake should hold the seat. So I will continue with my choice with Tamara Schumake.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I would support Mr. Woodard.
Thank you, sir. And I would be supporting Ms. Tamara Schumake. So the consensus of the council members, it looks like Mr. Woodard has four at this time that would constitute a majority of council.
Yes, sir. I will move forward to hopefully having him available at 12 noon. But of course, the final vote will be at that time.
Right, the final vote will be taken, of course, at 12 noon. So that will be done at that time.
Yes, sir.
Since there are no other items to discuss at this time, unless my colleagues have something from the floor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I just want to thank you and the colleagues for allowing the discussion, the candidates to be open. And I think that's very beneficial that we remain transparent. And I think it was beneficial for the public to hear from the candidates as well. So I hope that this will set a precedent. As Mr. Moody said, language says may. And so I think that as we move forward, that we would try to be as open in our discussions so that the public can see the transparency of what we're doing. And so I'm going to thank our colleagues for that.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Since there are no more, since there's no more business we need to conduct at this time, we will adjourn this meeting until noon, at which time we will reopen the meeting and conduct the business of the people. This meeting is adjourned.